Okay, the time is now four o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order.
Roll call, Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Wonderful. Pledge allegiance invocation?
Please join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you with heavy hearts, burdened by grief and sorrow for our fellow communities. We ask for your comfort and peace for all those affected by the terrible tragedy in the Texas Hill country, and we pray that you soothe their eighteen souls. Help them to find strength in your presence and guidance through this difficult time. Grant them the grace to heal, to remember with love, and to find hope in the promise of a future filled with your love. Amen.
All right. Any public testimony?
No, sir.
Okay, public hearing?
Yes, I've got three individuals.
Okay.
First one is Ms. Marcy Garza. She signed up to speak on Agenda Item 5E1.
5E1.
Here Ms. Imelda Cantú. Okay, she's the second individual.
Wonderful.
Imelda Cantú, same item, 5E1.
Come on.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Imelda Cantú.
Yes.
As residents directly impacted, I respectfully oppose the proposed 150 townhouses due to scale and design. I urge the city to conduct a full impact and traffic study and involve us in discussions about alternatives or mitigating solutions. The proposed development raises several serious concerns. Infrastructure strain, Nolana is not designed to handle the significant increase in traffic. This will result in congestion, increased accidents, crime, and delays. Impact on community services. Schools are already at capacity, and influx of new families will result in overcrowding, diminished education, and further strain on public services like emergency response and sanitation. Environmental disruption. The land behind our homes currently provides important green space and serves as a habitat for local wildlife. Paving over this area will increase flooding risk, noise, reduce air quality, and eliminate the natural buffer that provides our neighborhood with peace and privacy. Loss of character and privacy. The height of a two-story townhouse is incompatible with the existing character of our single-family home community. Also, we're extremely concerned with short-term rental companies buying condos for rental units. Residents directly bordering the development will suffer from a significant loss of privacy, quiet, and property value. I requested the scale be significantly reduced.
Your time is up, ma'am.
A green buffer zone, okay.
Thank you. Before you go, I'm just curious about something. When you said schools are at capacity, what data do you have to say to qualify that statement? Schools are at capacity.
Okay, I'm here to speak on behalf of Nora, and she's the one that did all the investigation.
She's just reading it?
Yes, I'm reading it for her and for the, all the ladies behind me.
Okay, well, but, so none of you know, have any knowledge about the facts that are being read? You can't answer any of the questions?
Not on a personal level, no. Not personally.
Okay. Thank you. This one on Sugar Road in, what's 495? Oh, awesome. Sugar Road in the west, okay. It's what? Forty-three hundred. Sugar and Nolana, I'm sorry.
Just west of the Starbucks and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, I see.
Wow.
Okay.
That corner.
Got it, all right. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
The third person who signed up to speak is San Juanita Gallegos Lopez.
Wonderful.
She's also speaking on Agenda 5E1.
Great. Is she here? Oh. Okay, no additional comments from? Well, she can finish at the half, I mean, if she wants. It's okay, hablamos español también, no te puedes. Pueden ver esos comentos si gusta. No quiere? That's okay. Está bueno. We understand. Tá bien, gracias. Okay, anybody else?
No.
All right.
All right, under City Manager's Report, we have the City Engineers' Report. Be allowed to sit and answer any questions, the information's in your house packet, if you all have any questions.
Hey, Bill, I don't know, I know you've been, you're catching up, and how we doing with the I-Road and the Moore Road projects?
So the I-Road, Mayor, is, we've got some, we've got four parcels outstanding to be acquired, yeah. The Right-Away Agent has reported that he'll have those closed in about two weeks.
Okay.
And then we have one in condemnation.
Okay.
And on the Moore Road, we have several parcels that are in negotiation. The biggest one being with Irrigation District Number Two.
Got it. We may have a solution for you on that.
Yes, sir.
As you know. All right. Anybody else have any other concerns, questions? Bridge coming along?
Yes, sir, the bridge is coming along, progress is good. We do have a conflict where the bridge crosses Irrigation District Number Two Canal.
Yes.
And so that's, that affects one span, one clear span between a set of columns.
And unfortunately, it's the second to the last span before it touches down at the port, at the port of entry. Understood. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right, next I'd like to call Chief Juan Gonzalez up to the podium. Mayor Commission, we want to take the opportunity to recognize Chief Gonzalez. He graduated with his bachelor's degree from South Texas College with Organizational Leadership back in May, and we want to recognize him, he has a very important job, and he continued to persevere and work towards his educational goals while still serving the community in the capacity of Chief of Police, and we find that to be very commendable, so we wanted to recognize him today for those academic achievements and for setting the example for all of us in the way that he pursued and overcame those challenges.
That's outstanding. Chief, tell me something.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, Dr. Hernandez, City Commission, Dr. Flores, and Mr. Rodriguez. I want to thank you for the recognition here today. I want to thank everyone in our great city and my colleagues for your support and encouragement along the way. Earning a degree in organizational leadership has been a personal goal of mine for a long time, and accomplishing it while serving in public leadership has made the journey even more meaningful. As I sat in my seat at graduation, some thoughts came to mind. One of them was that I could finally tell my wife, could he said, that she's no longer the only parent in the house with a degree. Another was that this achievement was for sure a reflection of the values we hold in our organization. Growth, service, and the belief that we can always keep learning, no matter where we are in life. It's never too late to keep investing in yourself, whether on the job or in service to our community. Leadership is a long-life process. I want to thank Dr. Flores for recognizing me in your report. Your acknowledgement means a great deal to me, and it is a reminder of how much leadership values the accomplishments of its team. Thank you again for this recognition, and I'm proud to continue serving our city and grow threat alongside everyone.
Absolutely. Well, congratulations to you, chief. Once again, you know, we're very delighted to see one of our leaders, you know, progresar, que estamos dando. And I'm glad you're doing it, because, you know, there's no better investment than, than you, yourself, right? The human capital, and that's what we believe in, as City Commission. And a lot of people are moving ahead in their lives, and we're very happy for you. And whether you stay or move on because you have better opportunities because of this, we're very proud of you, no matter what. We always want our people to stay here, but we understand you got to grow. And you moving on, for instance, if you decide later in life, we'll always be able to look back and say, this is where you started, this is where you're, we, everybody helped you, rallied behind you, and you're setting the example, but not only to your family, you're setting example to your entire teammates here and the commission, so from, from City Commission, we're very proud of you, congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you, thank you so much. Since I've been here with the city, it's, the opportunities have been, can you even describe what it's done and the training that we've received? And just, you know, continuing to support one another along the way. It's, as you said, tremendous along the path, continue hopefully, continue to provide the best service here to our community, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Muchas felicidades. Así que difícil ir al colegio y estar casado y tener hijos y luego tener un trabajo tan importante como el que tienes aquí. Sin embargo, me da gusto y saber que has tomado el tiempo para invertir en ti. El tiempo y todo lo que has aprendido nadie te lo quita, te lo puedes llevar. Y felicidades, y espero que muchos vean que aunque sea difícil, si quieren meter el tiempo, lo pueden lograr. Y una vez, felicidades.
Muchas gracias, Commissioner Chavez, thank you.
Absolutely.
And just, again, for my point, congratulations, I know getting a college degree is difficult.
Even more difficult, you got a full-time job, a father, a husband, and all the other things that go along with it, so.
Congratulations, it's a great, great accomplishment.
Thank you.
Can I have one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Teniendo un baster en tu, igual que tu esposa no te va a dar nada.
The honeydew list is not going to get shorter, sir.
Yeah, no.
Congratulations, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you, thank you so much.
Yes. All right.
All right, next we're going to have the recognition of the CPM graduates, but we have a lot of them out today. So we're going to move that to the next meeting, instead, we're going to call Assistant EMS Chief Ben Martinez for a short presentation.
All right.
Good afternoon, guys, Mayor, City Commission, Ben Martinez, Assistant Chief for EMS, for the record. Wanted to present SB 250, we've had the opportunity to assist them with a bike ride that goes from here to San Antonio, 250 miles. Now, I'm not the expert on what this is for, just that we were given the opportunity to help them in small part, right? For this particular thing, so I'm going to introduce Casey Swanson, he's going to talk about what it is, and also introduce the rest of his team.
Can you get your visitors on the other side of you?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, move the chairs.
This chair?
I'm going to see you.
Hello, I'm Casey Swanson, I am co-founder with my wife Jackie of Susanna Smiles, we're a nonprofit, and we focus on raising funds and awareness for Spina Bifida. Again, it's named Susanna Smiles after my daughter Susanna, and Jolynn, board member. We had several board members that couldn't make it, but we want to show gratitude to the City of FAR for supporting our event. It's our 15th annual that we just completed, so raised some good money for the, for the community of Spina Bifida, and we couldn't do it without your support, so thank you.
Yes. Do the funds that you raised, do they stay here to serve the people of the Rio Grande Valley?
Yes, so we host the bike ride, our nonprofit Susanna Smiles hosts the bike ride. We had about a little over eighty cyclists that rode from McAllen all the way to San Antonio, we had cyclists from all over the state of Texas. With the funds from SB 250, we donate a portion of it to an organization called Spina Bifida Texas, and they help families and communities that have individuals with Spina Bifida from all of South Texas. So from San Antonio down to the Rio Grande Valley, Laredo, they have a lending closet in San Antonio, but we also were able to open up another one in Houston, and they come down to the valley and help our community members in the valley with wheelchairs, beds, whatever services that they need, medical equipment, send children to camp, a special camp for kids with disabilities, college scholarships. Really is, is, we're, we want to provide any assistance that we can for people from South Texas, from San Antonio on down to the Rio Grande Valley and throughout Texas if we can. Yes, we, and over the fifteen years, we've been able to help over 500 children with Spina Bifida, and we've donated over $600,000 within the fifteen years.
Yeah. So this is because of you?
Yes.
You must be very proud. See how special, I mean, every human being is special, but see how much you contributed to society, how you've helped other human beings, right? Just with your smile, by being present on earth and having wonderful families, see how beautiful things can turn out? So congratulations for this great endeavor, and I hope it keeps going, you don't lose that energy. You're making a big difference in people's lives, hope you realize that. So, absolutely. Can we get a photo with her and her family? I just need you, Udi, can you move the, just put her in the center, but move the podium by us, so we can go down there with her.
All right, next we have Udi with the City Events of Interest.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Udi Gonzalez with your Office of City Communications, for the record, you have a packet with three flyers before we move on to events of interest. We want to showcase three recaps, the first one's FAR Connect, which is our FAR Internet Service. They just graduated, sorry, we just wrapped up the eighth class for the FAR Connect Computer Literacy Program.
Every day, the world becomes more connected, more intelligent, more digital. But what lies beyond the screen isn't just code or data, it's opportunity.
It was a great opportunity to learn how to use my laptop and search the web and different programs that I didn't know how to use before.
The FAR Connect Digital Literacy Program, we're upset yet another successful graduating class.
It really helped me a lot, even though I'm not new using computers, it updated me to what I knew before.
We were able to apply for a grant through the Methodist Healthcare Ministries of South Texas. This grant actually funded our staff that does the classes, as well as is providing all the laptops for the classroom and the laptops for our students.
From beginners to proficient users, everyone has access to a free laptop upon completion of their digital literacy certification, a resource many FAR families seek.
This course actually helped me a lot, and I know it's gonna, it's gonna help me help my children.
Elderly residents or adults working who cannot afford or have access to a computer other than a cell phone screen, you know, it really makes a difference for them.
And as FAR Connect continues to close the digital divide, the City of FAR encourages all FAR families to look out for the next opening.
Whoever would like to register for digital literacy courses, they can visit our website at teenfAR.net. If they need help over the phone, they can also call our customer service line, which is 956-402-2000.
Classes are held twice a week for five weeks, English or Spanish with time slot options.
Yeah, I would recommend to anybody, come and take advantage of it, and get your free laptop, of course.
A proficient digital community is ready for opportunities and growth. An opportunity isn't just about access, it's about empowerment.
A total of 127 people have graduated this class, and we have Mrs. Cindy Garza, who's very well involved in this program, as well as Jose, our IT Director, if there's additional questions on this great program.
No, I was going to say, congratulations, great program. You know, because of you, not my ninety-year-old, soon-to-be ninety-year-old mother-in-law, than the internet, right? Because of you. You're not going, when I walk in and talk to her, wait, takupada, takupada con el internet. So, but you know, exposes them to the world, and they're really, and they can look up a lot of things, and one is the, their version of movies that they like, right? Their reality is very different than ours, but now they can find them on YouTube and such, so it's very entertaining, and a lot of religious history that they like to look at as well. But it does, really has opened up the world to a lot of people, and I'm seeing it for San as well, so, no. It's a great program, and I hope the city continues doing it for the public at large.
Great. Our second recap is FAR, it was actually National Men's Health Week a few weeks ago. We have a recap to showcase as well on all the activities that took place here in the City of FAR.
So throughout this week, we were intentional about setting up events that kind of touched upon different parts of men's health. So on Monday, we had our FAR Wears Blue. It was kind of a social media campaign where we would have everyone wear blue, take a photo, and then post it, and then do a hashtag of FAR Wears Blue, and if possible, even highlight like a particular man in their life that had a big impact. And then on Wednesday, we had an educational component with, was a lettuce talk, which we partnered with Frontier Direct Care and the Human Resources Department, putting it together, and we had Dr. Madrid come in, and she was able to talk about the different aspects of a men's health that we need to be paying attention to as we get older. And then finally, on Friday, we had our Fitness and Fajitas, and this one was a part of it where they can just play sports, have a little friendly competition, and then if anything, just kind of kick back, kind of like a carne asada, and really just take a chance to, to relax and take a break from the heat especially. And then today, we've got the competitive part of it, where we're at the Aire del Sol, and we are having our Men's Health Week Golf Tournament. Hello, everyone, thank you all for coming out so early, thank you for joining us. My name is Nico Topangan, I'm the Public Health Director for the City of FAR, and thank you for joining us at our Men's Health Week Golf Tournament. I won't take up too much of your time, I know, I can feel the energy, I can feel the antiness wanting to get things going. Know that there's glory, there's honor, there's legacy, and there's fajitas on the line today, so.
Oh my gosh, we're playing some golf and de-stressing from life, which we have to do, because us men, we gotta, we gotta work hard for our families. Here in the valley, we have that thing called machismo, you know, we, we don't want to show weakness, you know, but, you know, we don't want to show weakness with our spouses, you know, but that's why it's really good to us men get together and talk about how we're feeling.
This is a new journey for you, if like, health is just not something that you've ever really looked into or explored and you're wanting to. If you're wanting to take that first step and you're not sure where to go, I'd recommend one thing is to talk to your doctor. If you're not to your doctor, and you haven't seen a doctor in a while, talk to a friend. It's a good chance to connect with somebody, and then if all else fails and you are still seeking, or even if it's the first instinct, visit us or call us at the Public Health Department, we are more than happy to answer any questions, and at the very least, point you in the direction or connect you with the health services that you need, and we'd be happy to have you.
Five, Men's Health Golf Tournament. Renee Davila and Luciano Urata with a score of 33.
And we continue doing this, so we want to really encourage, you know, men in our community to get involved the following year. We want to keep, you know, this tradition alive. Our third recap is our Public Works crews and the efforts that continue to make sure that our city is clean and green.
The Public Works Department is essential to the daily life of our city, maintaining the infrastructure that keeps our community moving and overseeing a wide range of services, from streets and drainage to recycling and fleet operations. One critical focus is inlet cleaning. Inlets allow stormwater to drain out of our streets.
So we're out here with the Storm Division, and we also have our Engineering Department, and we have a streets and drainage, but we're here to focus on inlets that we do maintenance year round. So what we want to do, make sure the inlets are clean, the grade inlets are clean, and the outfalls are clean. So we go from point A to point Z.
There are thousands of stormwater inlets across the city. This is why dedicated Public Works crews work daily to ensure they are clean and working efficiently. So far this year, crews have cleaned all 779 inlets in the southern part of the city, and it's an effort that doesn't stop.
We're going to be here at least two to three months, centralized FAR, and then we're going to be moving to the north side. Fifty percent of it is just standard maintenance that we do. The other fifty is a call that comes in from a resident, either through calling from the, to our front office, to the 301 app, which is very handy. When we get that work order, we are eager, I encourage you to use that.
Keeping our city clean and prepared is a team effort. While the city is responsible for servicing and cleaning the inlets, residents also play an important role by maintaining the grass and keeping debris away from the area. When everyone does their part, the entire community benefits.
As residents, they're responsible for the curving gutter, make sure the grass is cut along the curve.
And when placing brush out for pickup, keep it away from stormwater inlets to prevent blocking water flow during heavy rain. By following a few simple guidelines, we can all help protect our homes, roads, and environment. Alley maintenance also plays a critical role in keeping FAR beautiful and clean. A city ordinance requires property owners to maintain their alleys. This includes ensuring grass, weeds, and brush do not exceed 12 inches in height. However, the City of FAR offers assistance through special programs and initiatives to support this effort.
What we did a couple of weeks ago, we did an initiative with the POET, which is the FAR Ordnance Enforcement Team. It was a collaboration of so many departments, and we were able to clean up 120 tons of debris, and over eighty tires were picked up on that day. Not only that, we also educated the community, that's one of the things that we wanted to do. Then two or three days later, we had the Beautify FAR, which just happened to have been rescheduled, and it fell in the same week, and we focused on an area just south of Memorial Park, west of 281. And on that day, we were able to pick up over 600 tires, and we collected over 250 tons of debris.
From scheduled cleanups to educational resources, the City of FAR is here to support the community. Another unique and free program launched by the City of FAR is the Property Maintenance Program, which helps veterans and the elderly residents maintain their properties.
I really want to thank our administration, our commission, our mayor, because without them and their support, none of this could happen. All of this takes resources, it takes time, it takes money to do all this. We have their 100% support on that, so I just want to give a thanks for them for being so supportive.
For any questions, please call 956-402-4350, or report any issues or concerns to the FAR 311 app. The Public Works Department staff is proud to serve the community and are always working for you.
Mayor, if I may, we also want to incorporate a quick reminder that we're, we have many events throughout the year to continue these efforts under the umbrella of Keep FAR Beautiful, Public Works, our Trash Bash, the third Saturday of every month, and as many of those reminders were also listed.
Mayor, if I may. Yeah, just to add on some of the stuff that they're doing with the Public Works, we need to let the people know, notify them that our storm drains are not to sweep your grass and stuff to your front street and sidewalks to clean. There's a purpose for those, and I know you guys have a lot of problems with that, because I know there were, where I live, I saw some people that were doing yard work, and they're probably, I mean, paid, they're contracted out. And I stopped and I told them, I said, you don't put the grass in the drain, that's not your trash. You're supposed to vacuum it, rake it up, clean it up, and take it with you, and the guy looked at me like, papa, this is why we've been doing it for years. I said, well, you know what, you've been a problem for the City of FAR for years. And he kind of didn't like it, what I told him, but it's the truth. I think we need to let people know that those storm drains are very important, because then everybody's complaining about that the streets are draining, they're, you know, they're flooding now, we're having this, we're having these problems. So I think it's very important for people to understand that those storm drains need to be clean, kept clean, in order for the homes not to get flooded.
Yes, we'll keep pushing public service announcements, Commissioner, to make sure the message gets across. Thank you so much. Moving on, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Moving on to upcoming events. So the first one is the Pet Wellness Fair and Rabies Clinic, this is happening Saturday from nine to one. This event is at capacity, but we're still encouraging people to come out and enjoy the fair component of it. There's 440 pets that they didn't register themselves, but there's 440 that already, you know, ready to be out here on Saturday. This includes a rabies vaccine, but we'll have vendors, you know, with different types of products, from pet cookies, pet food, pet grooming services, and it's all happening at the Pepe Salinas Recreation Center. So there's two components, so people that are taking their pets to get those vaccines, we partnered with YMR Services, who will be assisting with this. And this is also going to be a great day, because it's the relaunch of the PAWS program, which is the Pet Activating Wave Finding System, which is like a tracking device. So a lot of things happening in one event, and we'll have, of course, our Public Health Directors there to assist our community if there's any questions regarding vaccines, services, or the PAWS chip program. if there's any questions regarding vaccines, services, or the PAWS chip program. Yes, sir. If there's additional questions, Nico is also here. If you want to elaborate on, on any of the components of this event happening on Saturday.
Ms. Yuri, oh, Nico Tapangan, Public Health Director, City of FAR. Siri definitely nailed all the major components. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Is that the same one we had at FAR 1 before?
Yes, sir.
The same one?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
So we're gonna have the tents where people can, they're gonna drive up and the animals come out. Is that it?
This one will be indoors, thankfully.
Indoors?
One of the big things that we got in terms of feedback was that outdoors at this time of the year was pretty brutal. And so we were able to set it up indoors, but still kind of accommodate the fair and wellness being in one portion of Pepe Salinas and then the vaccinations occurring in a different part.
Wow. Who did it last? I did it. Who else? Who else? I was there.
You got vaccinated?
There's not enough vaccines, sir.
We registered you just in case.
I got more cooties than those dogs, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I was out there. I remember that. So I was asking like, okay, but now it's gonna be indoor. All the treats will be indoors as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, people loved it before, so.
Yes, we got an overwhelming crowd. We're expecting it. We're hoping for it.
Wonderful. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Once again, this is at capacity for vaccines, but you can still enjoy the fair portion of the event.
Are you limiting them to FAR residents or just anybody who signs up?
FAR residents.
Got it. Wow, are you at capacity?
Yes, we're at capacity, I believe, the same day. I mean, within 24 hours. So we start promoting the flyer, but this is why we're encouraging to go out there and see some of the vendors for the pets. No one's gonna get turned away, so we want them to come out and enjoy this event. Our Parks and Rec Department is also hosting Frozen Junior. This is the first time we put this event together or production. This is going to have three dates, as they're labeled there in the flyer, and this is happening at the PSJ North High School Auditorium. $7. There's 80 children of different ages, from five, I believe, to 14, 13, 14, putting this great production together. And so we're encouraging people to come out. It's gonna be really nice. This is the first time we do Frozen Junior.
But this is City of FAR doing it, not PSJ?
No. So we're using their auditorium, but this program falls under Parks and Rec. And there's students from not only the City of FAR, we have students in this production from Edinburgh and surrounding cities.
Very nice.
So three dates. There's more information on the flyer. People want to start getting their tickets ahead of time. And then our last flyer is, it's an open house. This is under Development Services, our FAR, our future. As you know, our comprehensive plan happens every year. This is a great time to, you know, talk to our residents. What are some of their, you know, what they want to see in the City of FAR, whether it's more green spaces, parks, transportation. They'll give us a feedback that we need to hopefully bring to our commission or mayor. But we only, when we do these, we are not only doing the surveys, we actually have raffles, we have food. And of course, city managers out there talking to our residents to kind of engage and understand what they want to see more of here in the City of FAR. So that's happening July 24th from 5 to 7. And this is happening in the south side of FAR, the FAR DRC, the FAR Development and Research Center. This flyer is also up and we really encourage, you know, residents who want to contribute to the projects and capital improvement projects, anything to come by. The survey's only a few minutes long, but they really, their feedback is valuable for all of us. This concludes City Managers Events of Interest. Thank you.
All right, next we have consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
One, one of session for the record.
Oh, okay. One of session. In accordance with section 551.071 through 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convening into executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being 4:34. We'll be back. The time 5:07. Back in open session.
All right, under item 6A, consideration in action, if any, on ordinance appointing, reappointing municipal judge, adoption on the first reading. Mayor Commission, we'd like to keep Judge Juan Viesca's, if that's okay with you. We think he does a fine job.
Second.
That guy? All right. That's right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
All right, item 6B, consideration in action, if any, on resolution executing an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for Moore Road between Cage and Iowa.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Item 6C, consideration in action, if any, on resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant program to fund six firefighter positions.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 6D, consideration in action, if any, on resolution appointing or reappointing one member to the Community Development Council. Staff recommends Frank Saldana.
Second.
Frank Santana.
Santana, yeah.
There we go.
Okay, no problem. Just trying to make sure. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 6C, consideration in action, if any, on resolution suspending the August 19, 2025 effective date of the Texas Gas Service Company's proposed rate adjustment for cities within the Rio Grande Valley service area.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 7A, present, 7A, we already did it. Item 8A, consideration in action, if any, on the purchase of pneumatic shoring equipment for the Fire Department from Metro Fire Apparatus Specialists from Houston, Texas, in the amount of $238,607 from Byboard Cooperative Program 746-24.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 9A, consideration in action, if any, authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter into a service contract with Via Plus from Carrollton, Texas, for the FAR International Bridge toll collection system.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 9B, consideration in action, if any, authorizing city manager to negotiate the sale of real property located at 9901 South Cage Boulevard.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 9C, consideration in action, if any, on Amendment Number Three in the amount of $148,526 to the Professional Engineering Service Agreement, GDJ Engineering, for the Moore Road project.
Just approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 9D, consideration in action, if any, on Amendment Number One with the Service Contract of Financial Advisory Services with PFM Financial Advisors.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 90, consideration in action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Texas Underground Inc. from Perlin, Texas, for the rental of a 2025 Freightliner Vector Truck, Byboard Number 676-22.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. We're adjourned. The time is 5:10. Thank you.